Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, March 16th at 6:01 PM. For those of you joining us in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agenda and supporting documentation in the little plastic bins on the wall by the door where you came in. Help yourself to that information. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28. This session will be rebroadcast again Friday at noon, in case you miss it. And you can also catch us streaming live on the Internet at our website, www.townofyountville.com. Just click on the Town Council and Agenda tab. You'll find this session there as well. And for those of you joining us in council chambers this evening, we would appreciate it if you would turn off your cellphones and pagers. And we'll get this meeting started. Can we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Chilton?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Mayor Saucerman?
Here. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Item five, closed session. We had closed session on March 2nd. Was there any reportable action?
Madam Mayor, no, there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Item six, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor. At the request of the proponents of item 10, the Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District, they have requested that the item be continued until April 6th meeting.
Do you need a motion for that?
No.
Okay. Okay. Item seven is public comment.
I move for adoption of agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it. Okay. Item seven, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any matters not listed on tonight's agenda? Anyone? Okay. Seeing no public comment, we'll close that and move on to item eight, consent calendar. Are there any -- thank you. Good night. Are there any changes or corrections to the consent calendar this evening?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item C for a separate vote.
All righty. Anything else? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items 8A, B, and D through G.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. That motion carries.
I'll make a separate motion to approve item A to C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Muller opposes that item. Item nine, presentations. We have a proclamation for the American Red Cross. Is Joan here? Hi, Joan.
Hi.
This is a really nice proclamation declaring March as American Red Cross Month. And I'm just going to read a few of the "whereas's." I don't know, they're all pretty good "whereas's." We might read them all. Whereas each March, the American Red Cross and its local community chapters are formally recognized for their essential humanitarian role in the towns, cities, and counties they serve. And whereas every day, Napa County Red Cross volunteers and employees provide essential services in our community to help those affected by everything from floods, earthquakes, and other natural and human-caused disasters, thanks to the generous financial support of people throughout Napa County. And whereas for more than 92 years, the citizens of all the towns and cities in Napa County have relied on the Red Cross to provide disaster relief, as well as training in lifesaving skills and disaster response processes and procedures. And whereas over the past year, the Napa Red Cross Disaster Action Team volunteers who are on-call 24/7, 365 days out of the year, responded to 21 local residential fires and helped 43 displaced people with emergency food, clothing, and a warm, dry bed to sleep in. And whereas over the past 4,976 individuals learned lifesaving and safety skills, including first aid, CPR, and AED training, and swimming, and lifeguarding through 578 classes offered by our chapter. And whereas the newly-formed Operation Military Support Committee held six lunches for military families, allowing them to network with each other and learn about available services, as well as sending gift packages to military in Iraq and Afghanistan, and supporting other organizations in the county who do the same. And whereas our chapter conducted 22 disaster education presentations for the community to help attendees learn to prepare to make their families and neighborhoods safer. And whereas Red Cross volunteers contributed 8,736 hours of service to the chapter, serving as members of the Board of Directors and on-chapter committees, instructors teaching lifesaving skills, office helpers, fundraising support, disaster action teams, responders to large and small disasters, and more. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Cynthia Saucerman, Mayor, on behalf of the Yountville Town Council, do hereby proclaim March 2010 as American Red Cross Month. Especially during this extraordinary time for our country, we encourage all members of our communities to support the Napa County Chapter of the American Red Cross and its noble humanitarian mission, dated this day, March 16th, 2010.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think the Mayor just gave my entire acceptance speech.
Thank you.
That is very thorough, and we do all the things that have been listed. One thing, I'd like you to refresh your mind, that March has been known as Red Cross Month across the country since 1943, when President Roosevelt issued the Declaration in support of Red Cross efforts to raise funds for World War II services. And of course, as the Mayor said, our Napa County Chapter has been serving the local community for 22 years. I was going to list some of the things, but the proclamation says them all. But I do want to call your attention to something, that we locally are supported just by local funds. That's exactly where we come from. And if any one of us this evening had a fire in our home and did not have any place to go, any place to sleep, or any food or clothing, the Red Cross would step up to the plate to help you out. That's our mandate. And I can't enforce enough how important local funds are to our Napa County Chapter. And thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 10 has been pulled from the agenda. Item 11, budget workshop. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Myself and the Finance Director are going to walk you through a little bit of some of the key elements related to development of the budget and the budget framework for this year. The purpose tonight is to provide you an overview of the revenue projections estimated by staff, a footnote as to what we believe is going on with the state budget, how that may impact our revenue stream, and also to let you know the projections and estimates that we're going to be using as we build our budget. And then, as you know, we will typically follow up, and you'll have some budget workshops in more detail. Tonight, we want to focus on making sure the Council understands the premises upon which we're starting this exercise, and if there are any questions or concerns, that we have some feedback and direction from the Council on them. Our objective, consistent with the feedback you've given us, is to develop and implement a balanced budget for fiscal year 2010-11, keeping the town's expenses within their estimated level of revenue projected to be earned by the town. It's not a surprise, based on what we've been talking about, but our projections are that revenues for 2010-11 will be flat, which means that we're still generating less total revenue than we did in fiscal year 2008-9, which was a banner year in this town for TOT and sales tax. I also need to remind everybody that in our community, we are very atypical in our funding structures of most California communities. Eighty-five percent of our town's total general fund revenue is derived simply from four funding sources. Approximately 60% to 65% on any given year are derived from TOT. Now, there is a silver lining right now to our transient occupancy tax. It seems to be one of the few taxes that Sacramento hasn't figured out a way to try to steal, grab, or divert. So that's a positive. But it's also a volatile tax, depending on revenue stream from visitors and others. So I think that's something in the unsettled economic, we're keeping a very low projection, even though there's some very positive things in our community. We're projecting a very flat revenue stream, even though we have new hotel rooms coming online, and we will also, next year, see the additional number of rooms at the Yountville Inn. Secondary source for us, that is about 15%, is our sales tax. Again, very unique distribution. Seventy-five percent of our sales tax restaurant is derived from restaurants. So we're, again, projecting a flat revenue stream in sales tax. The good news is, that is a very positive trend compared to what most agencies in California are facing, which are generally in the 10% to 15%, 16% decline. And then we have property tax and vehicle license in lieu. We've heard earlier from John Tudor, and again, this is going to be flat. We have some declining assets that have been posted, but we also have some new property turning over. Yountville has also a unique characteristic, which is, we don't have a lot of property turnover on a given year, but when something that has a base property value year of 1980 sells, even in today's market, it generally comes on and is assessed at a higher number than that which it had earned before. And we also, again, have some significant commercial development with the property assessment for the Hotel Luca and Cantinetta Piero, and also the expansion of the Yountville Inn. So there will be, as Assessor Tudor commented, there are some unique characteristics in Yountville. But again, we're projecting a very flat. Again, you're going to see the numbers we're using are flat. They're matching last year. Even in some areas where we think there might be some reason to be optimistic, we're going to be conservative. I'd rather be coming back to you at mid-budget and saying things look a little better, and some of those things you guys wanted to do, but I said we don't have the money to do. We can talk about adding, rather than the converse, which is whether you want to cut out of your budget at mid-year. So again, based on your direction, we will continue to be very conservative. The county Council and management team's focus is to maintain our town's core established service levels, or where appropriate, to implement modifications in the service areas necessary to live within our means. The town staff will continue to focus on identified town council goals and objectives, including maintaining the town's fiscal soundness through the current economic crisis and beyond, maintaining and enhancing the town's public facilities and infrastructure, implementing the business plan for the community center, improving the communication between town government and the community, and updating our vision and character and quality of life. And as you know, the Council has taken earlier action to work with the community and other various stakeholders, a five-year strategic planning process. So that's underway. There will be a series of public workshops and stakeholder meetings coming up later in April, and we'll begin marketing for those, but that particular strategic planning process is moving forward. And after the stakeholder meetings, as you know, we will then come back, share that information with you, and then the Council, in another series of public meetings and workshops, will work on refining and developing those themes and strategic vision elements. So that process is going on and will not play a significant part in the shaping of this year's budget, but it will provide a strong foundation for your long-term policies. With that, I'd like to have Finance Director Brad Ray focus a bit more in detail on some of the key revenue projections that staff is making at this time.
Thank you. Steve kind of already walked through our flat rate, kind of rolling over, but I just want to say, we don't just roll over the numbers. We spend quite a bit of time talking about it. We do a lot of analysis. We try to follow all that's going on at the state level and stay abreast of the latest changes. So our flat TOT rate is just basically, we're expecting that even with new rooms coming on, we know there's still a slow economic recovery. We have seen some trends where occupancy is slightly down, but the room rates have shifted down. They've actually decreased. Our average room rate has gone down about 7%, but that's helped our revenue in a positive way, because it's kept occupancy higher than it would be otherwise. So it is a conservative projection, because we do have new rooms coming online, but we would rather come back mid-year and make an adjustment if we see a positive trend. So we'll be monitoring that very closely, and with the monthly reporting, it'll be easier to see a trend and to respond to it. The sales tax is also conservative, 644,000, which is what we're projecting for the current year as well. And we feel that seems to kind of go, not exactly hand-in-hand with the TOT, but the sales tax comes up when the TOT comes up, for sure. So as the economy begins to recover, we hope we see that come back up as well. And this current year, 2009-10, was a projected 7% decrease over the prior year, where we did have our all-time high, as Steve mentioned. So this is conservative. We know we have some new restaurants coming online, and we've had good reports back from shops doing well, and business starting to pick up. But again, we want to be conservative. We want to just monitor and see where we're at, and we'll make a mid-year adjustment if that's warranted. Our property tax, based again on what John Tudor's report was, that there have been some Prop 8 reassessments, and we have experienced a negative CPI factor, which is the first time anyone can remember that happening. So we are projecting flat, and we're not including the $50,000 that we received current year for the E-RAF, because we're not sure if we will receive that next year. So that's going to be a total of $456,000, which is net of the collection fee. And our property tax in lieu, flat amount, would be 338,000, which is equal to what we're receiving in the current year. The current information on our state COPs grant, which is also very important to the town, $100,000, currently, we are expecting to receive our $100,000 next year. We're monitoring very closely, because we don't know what the state can do to us, but that's currently funded with a VLF tax, specially earmarked for COPs grants. And that tax isn't set to expire until the end of 2011, the end of fiscal year 2011. So we do expect to receive our full $100,000, but we'll be monitoring that very closely to be sure that doesn't change. But we are anticipating that. We want to plug it into our budget. And that's kind of a walkthrough on our main revenue sources.
Now we'll turn gears a little and talk about a few of the bullet points on budget parameters and key assumptions. A big one from the staff level is that we're going to maintain our existing core areas of services at the same level of service where possible. No new services, initiatives, or programs introduced unless accompanied with an identified funding source. So that'll be a theme that when we talk about, if we want to go do something we haven't been doing, we've got to figure out a funding structure to do that, or it's a non-starter. I mean, that's just kind of the discussion point. Improve cost recovery targets in areas where there's a significant general fund imbalance. Balance the budget with expenditures within available revenue. Trim budget to fit while absorbing uncontrollable cost increase, such as the share of contract increase, CAL FIRE insurance coverage increases, et cetera, that we don't have discretionary or direct control over. Re-implement inclusion of an annual budget contingency in an estimated range of $100,000 to potentially fund initiatives or costs not known at the time of budget development. Historically, this town council has included a very small line-item contingency for miscellaneous things that occurred during the year, and that way we don't have to make a major mid-year budget correction. You provide some structure. Last year, that was eliminated as we were doing something, and I think going back, and again, we're talking something in a very small amount, but the idea is, if possible, that's a prudent thing for us to put back in, because there's usually two or three items of interest or a cost that we need to look at, and having a small placeholder for that type of item, I think, is reasonable and prudent planning. So that's in there, and we'll split the discussion a little bit, and Kathleen will talk about a few more of the parameters and assumptions.
We're going to be implementing our increase to our OPEB reserve fund allocation. We'll be increasing that from 5% to 6%, and that's just a calculation based on our payroll costs to set aside funding for OPEB. And that's per the Council's policy. We're going to continue our implementation of a 1% PERS internal rate, and we've established a PERS reserve fund. This current year is the first year we've done that, and the goal of that is just to help, in anticipation of possible future rate increases, to help smooth that out for the town, help future budgets. We're going to decrease and/or defer where possible capital improvement projects to reflect our available revenues. We're looking at no significant cost increases or decreases provided with employee bargaining unit labor negotiations, and staff will begin to focus on review of retirement program benefits offered to new hires. We had no water rate increase for the current year, 2009-10, in spite of the fact that the operating costs continue to require a general fund subsidy. So what we're really recommending is that the Council consider a review of the rates and the services that we deliver, and that if we do continue with a general fund subsidy, that we make that as a conscious policy decision, and decide what level of subsidy should and can be provided. And that same statement also applies to our sewer rates, that we currently have been subsidizing, and that the enterprises have not been self-sufficient. So we should provide that same exercise with our sewer enterprise fund. Our fire service contract with Napa County and CAL FIRE is going to be an increase of less than 1%. The town manager has been meeting and negotiating with CAL FIRE, and we expect approximately a $15,000 cost increase to $516,000, and that's net of some property tax assessments that the county keeps on behalf of the fire service. So given that we've seen 6% to 10% increases over the last few years, this is a positive trend to keep that increase down to this level. Our law enforcement contract with Napa County for sheriff services is increasing by 12%, and that's per 2007 contract. That's going to go up by $87,000, up to $810,000 for 2010-11. Our water purchase cost from Vector Reservoir is anticipated to stay at the current rate, which is $582 per acre foot. And we'll be working with them to make sure that we keep abreast of any future changes in that cost. We're currently projecting our $100,000 COP grant, and we hope that the state doesn't take that from us. We're not anticipating any state raid on our local property tax revenue, since they did that last year, and under Prop 1A, they're not legally allowed to borrow again until they repay what they've already taken. So that's the good news from the state. But we are faced with possible elimination or reduction of our highway user tax, which is also commonly called our gas tax. And I'm following this very closely. For the town, it's a total of about $57,000. There's a lot of things circulating. It first looked like they'd take it all. The latest says, oh, maybe they'll take half and just pay it very late. But the bigger issue for the town is the funding associated with transit is how our trolley service gets funded. And that funding through NCTPA, we only have a small share of cost with that. So if that funding gets pulled, we'll have to make some tough decisions about our trolley, which we all know and love, so.
All right. Now that leads to a little bit of our CIP project and program, and here's where we're also, we're trying to identify either projects that have been previously adopted by the Council that are continuation, and/or some that, based on your feedback, we've been trying to identify, and these are not locked in stone. These are just some that we're working on, and again, prioritization, your feedback is very helpful to us. We have a little bit more of the utility undergrounding. We're making some very good progress, but we will have our second phase to finish. Yount to Humboldt, South Washington, and again, we've been successful in piggybacking on some private development to help offset some of the cost. The most challenging part of this is, we work with PG&E, and the process takes several years at times, and the costs come in small increments, and then you'll get the contract from PG&E with a dollar value, AT&amp;T and Comcast. Then there's the trenching. So, for example, the Humboldt Finnel seems like it's taking a lifetime to conclude, and it's getting very close. And if things go well, knock on wood, we hope to be under construction this summer during the school season, which makes sense, because that project's proximal to the school. Similar for finishing the line down by the Catholic Church in the south end of town that piggybacks on the work that has been significant level of undergrounding associated with the Yountville Inn expansion. And then we're also anticipating the work on North Washington, from basically Madison to Padrone area, in partnership with the Hotel Luca and some of the other development there. So a fairly significant amount of undergrounding will be finished in this fiscal year and next, and this is the second level of payment. We're anticipating about a $300,000 level is necessary, and we're going to be fine-tuning that, and if it doesn't require quite as much, we'll adjust that. We're trying to have PG&E be more confirming of their cost. Second is a water main replacement, and I'm going to try and defer that as long. That's one of the issues we have to look at. The Water Fund is not developing adequate capital resources to maintain capital infrastructure. A tree management program, path and sidewalk management, those are all general fund areas, and, you know, based on Council's previous direction, we anticipate still having some level of programs. They may be adjusted a little bit based on the available funding. Hopper Creek flood mitigation projects, we're trying to take a look there. Those come from a different funding source. That's Measure A. So that's more of a staff prioritization to identify the appropriate projects that we think are going to have the best result for the town for the money, but it is not a general fund or utility enterprise impact. We anticipate having a level of street paving and slurry seal program. Again, that'll be metered back to match the funding structure, and there's a little bit of play yet on how gas tax and some of those come. But the other thing that I also would say is, Graham and I are looking at perhaps a philosophical change with some of our utility and management plans, where we may do a more significant plan every other year, and in the off-year, you may bank money, so that instead of doing a $40,000 paving, what we do is we bank money one year, and then we do an $80,000 project. And the same can apply for apply for some of our sewer and water. In an agency our size, project admin and overhead is about the same at a certain level, whether you're doing a $60,000 project or a $200,000 project. And we're thinking that we can get more bank for our money by trying to plan these projects and do what would be considered, you know, scattered projects, but if we're going to pave, we're going to pave and identify the segments that we're paving, do one contract, one level of management rather than one project, go out to bid, do all that. So there are some savings hopefully that will allow us to get more bang on the street for our bucks, and that would also be a similar approach, like I said, to water line replacement, sewer line replacement. Council has made very clear to us that they want to level a streetlight program. We'll put some options together for you and look at those. I think we've deferred about as long as we can our above-ground fuel tank, and one, it's life cycle, we're right on track with life cycle or even maybe a year or two over. But I think there's something I need to share with you also that has become a little more concerning to me now, no longer that we have an operating gas station. So we need to have an adequate fuel supply, which consists, in our case, both of unleaded and diesel, because it's not a good thing if the wastewater treatment plant starts operating because we've had a situation and there's no fuel supply. I'm just being real brass tacks, but that's the kind of common sense type thing. You know, it's not so much, we'll send the trucks, you know, we don't have that big a fleet, send them down to Napa. Yes, we can do that, but then, you know, everybody goes, well, why do we see all these trucks driving down to Napa? And that's a half hour each way when they do their, so I mean, it's just some common sense in terms of service delivery, but I think we're going to need to make that a priority this year. And then we also will need to come up with some review of the seismic situation in Town Hall and also some retrofit of the vacated library space to improve. As you note in my Friday message, we received some disappointing news from the state of California that our CAL FEMA seismic retrofit grant application was not accepted. They determined we did not have enough lives in danger based on the occupancy and use. That's not quite how they're phrasing it, but basically when they evaluate it, you know, they're looking at number, and our, you know, the number of people in this building compared to other areas did not warrant in their consideration. The other thing, unfortunately, the town is probably a good 15 years behind when municipal facilities were considered a much better target for grants than they are currently. There's also some potential projects depending on fine-tuning, and again, some of these will also vary a bit based on our calculation of revenues and funding structures. Obviously, things that are funded by the general fund have a little more elasticity in terms of whether they're going to go forward or not as opposed to an earmarked fund, although I also put our utilities in this category because all of your utility capital are funded by the general fund at this point. So whereas typically you would have water and sewer enterprise funds funding the capital, the existing rate structure has not, at this point, been funding adequate in those areas. So some things that are still on the council's list that we want to do and I think we need to work on. Some level of community survey, although we are addressing, I think, part of that, you know, we hope to address a little bit through our park and rec survey and through the strategic planning process, but I know that's, you know, that's been a discussion item of the council. The general plan update process, we're going to try and make do with some minor website adjustments, but a complete overhaul of the website's not included in the current budget at this time. That's high on my priority because we really have really, really improved the amount of information, but we haven't improved the user navigation or making it easy for staff. And I think we, I'm hopeful that I can find some money, but right now I need to let you know that that's on the kind of the secondary tier level. Again, you will help make sure that the tiers are appropriate. We are going to be needing to look at reconstruction and resurfacing of the tennis court. Reconstruction has been preferred, and it may be that we have to do a more interim slight resurfacing and get a few years out of it before we're able to afford reconstruction. You know, resurfacing may be in the 15,000 to 30,000 range as opposed to reconstruction, which is in the several hundred thousand range. If it's determined that a dog park is feasible, we have no money for a dog park. Additional water line replacements are subject to the same conversation about finding and determining if they're going to be general fund funded. I'm anticipating that based on the council's direction, we'll have a couple more phases of the streetlight replacement. I don't think we'll be able to afford to do it all in one year. There will be additional utility undergrounding. Impact fee study is not high on my list because as I look around town and see eight to 10 parcels, I don't know that spending the money on updating the impact fee study is going to have the kind of cost recovery necessary. So you don't be surprised if, when this CIP comes to you, see that eliminated as we work on that. Solar feasibility, I also want to add, and I apologize, I also want to look at some alternative things such as methane, you know, we may want to try and do methane recapture down. So I need to put some feasibility studies. This may or may not be the budget that we're able to do that, you know. So some of those, I think, you know, we want to at least get them defined as projects and put into the capital improvement, but, you know, we're going to try and do as much as we can within the revenue stream and stay within that guidance that you've given us. You know, and there's still been requests that we expand the shuttle slash trolley service from five day to seven day. I don't see it in the current cards with the current funding structure that we have. So those are just some of the CIP discussions, and what we want to make sure is if we, you know, if we're missing the boat on a few that are important to the council, we'd like some feedback on that. The last part of the report, I don't want to dwell on because I don't think we need to do that, but what I've tried to put together is some discussion for the council in a thoughtful way that if we need to talk about changes in significant budget restructuring, how would you go about having that discussion so that it's something, at least you have something to look at. Staff feels that right now, our organization understands the fiscal environment. And basically, last year, we put together a maintenance of effort budget, and we did some internal restructuring downward in areas we controlled. You know, the two biggest areas that went up were the police and fire contracts, and we had a little bit of an increase in our insurance, which was actually projected because we opened a brand-new $13 million facility. So, you know, that wasn't a surprise in the sense that we had to project for some adjustment in our insurance. And our employees, as you know, were, they agreed to a zero cost of living increase last year, and I think that we're having some discussions with them now, and they're, I think, very understanding of it, and indicated also an awareness that we may need to be looking at implementing of a two-tiered structure for retirement programs going forward with some new hires. So I'm very encouraged that our employees are, I think, are aware of what's going on around them, but we also are very lean service delivery. We have, you know, 24 full-time employees delivering the broad range of services that we do and a hybrid service delivery with contractors and some other service providers. So if we start making wholesale changes, we need to be having policy direction, and we need to have some better direction about what the priorities are. And again, I'm not going to dwell on that because our current projections indicate that with us doing some management prioritization, you know, trimming budgets a couple thousand here, being a little more focused, we should be able to continue maintaining our core level of services. But I will be pretty firm on no, you know, and we aren't going to be able to do more, or we're not going to be able to add this, or if we're trading this, we're going to have to make sure that there's a balancing within the budget. So that's the framework that I've been working with the management team here on in shaping budget. I think it's fairly consistent with the feedback from the council, but that's what Kathleen and I and the management team would like to hear from you on.
Does council have any questions for staff? Councilmember Dutton?
I guess probably more comments than questions.
Yeah. Any comments?
Well, in going through the, what you talked about, I, you know, I was just chatting some notes down, I agree with the TOT, hold it neutral. I think south of us, if you read the problems in Napa, they were very aggressive on what they anticipated and got in some real trouble that way. The only one I really have a tough time with, and I see where you do it, is the neutral on the sales tax, because for the life of me, all I ever hear about is these restaurants you can't get in, they're packed, they're full. So either they've cut their prices significantly or what have you, but it's hard to believe on those comments that, and that being such a large part of our sales tax, that those would, you know, I certainly couldn't believe they're going to go down.
Well, let me point out, that's, first of all, your observation's correct, and our sales tracking, sales tax tracking indicates actually we're probably going to exceed our revenues this year, but I also want to point out, we're dealing with a 25,000 to 35,000 margin, which is not overly large. If you look at, last year, we dropped it from, you know, 692 to about 644. The concern I have is that that volatility and if there is a little bit of decrease, but I have to share with you right now, our sales tax distribution is not, you know, it's outperforming in general, but I also, I just want to be a little bit more conservative. I'd rather come back mid-year and say, you know, there were a few other things that you talked about doing, let's maybe do a mid-year budget amendment to include some of those when we're more comfortable. So I don't want to send a message that we have a decline, but we also, you know, we've got some new performers, making sure that we have a redistribution. I mean, our sales tax is 75% restaurants, and just to put it in perspective, some of you've heard me tell you this story, but, you know, we have just north of 1,900 restaurant seats. An average restaurant has three sittings an evening. We can sit our whole town, the whole town, in a sitting and a half, which means most of our revenue from restaurants is not coming from our own population. So I think we just want to be conservative on that. I mean, I do think you've got, you know, I don't want folks to think that our folks aren't doing well because Councilmember Dutton's observations are correct. We're seeing some good activity, but we've also got a few that are in transition, you know, some new things opening. As much as everybody loves a taco truck, since you take it to go, it doesn't generate sales tax, so I got a, you know, little nuances like that, but.
Okay. Just on a couple of the other things, I think that reinstating the $100,000 contingency, budget contingency is a good thing to do. You'll have somewhere to go for something rather than trying to rob Peter to pay Paul. I've always thought that any kind of smoothing that you can do in PERS is great. I know I've talked to some other jurisdictions, and they have implicated it or, you know, started it, and because of those rates, velocity of those going up and down, it certainly makes good for the smoothing, so I agree with that 100%. As far as, I certainly understand the town manager's thoughts, and I agree with on the water and sewer. I would say, I would definitely support any kind of, I guess, a tightening up of that situation, not, you know, maybe not a whole hammer right at once, but certainly start to work towards a revenue neutral and expense neutral on that. You mentioned on the underground utilities and looking at CIP, we did not have anything in there on the five-year projection for this next year that I see here, so that's certainly new into there.
You're absolutely correct. We're going to have to do some modification on that.
That's about it?
Any questions, comments? Councilmember Mueller?
I think the first comment I didn't see on the list, and I'm just assuming that this is one of your assumptions you didn't put down, was that I strongly recommend that we, when we prepare the budget, maintain our current reserves of, which I believe to be $1,025, is that correct?
Yes, that's one of our working assumptions.
Okay, great. I didn't see here, so I wanted to make sure that that stayed at the top of the list. I also agree that with the part about no new services initiatives or programs introduced unless accompanied with a identified funding source, and so then I went down to the, for lack of better terms, we can call it the mayor's fund or the slush fund, the $100,000. I like that idea in concept, however, it seems to be partially in conflict if we're not going to have any, say, we're not going to do any more new services initiatives or programs, but yet we've got this slush fund that can fund those. I think we need to kind of understand what we're talking about there because if we say for some reason we can't, you know, fund a new water tower or whatever we want to do, but yet there's $100,000, I mean, how do, how do we continue to make that argument? So I think we need to think that through a little bit more. It's, I think I still see our sheriff folks in the back. It's really unfortunate we're taking such a big hit there, so I don't, I just wanted to bring it up. I'm not sure if we have any other options to consider in the future if these rates continue to skyrocket like this. I don't know if you guys can think of anything partnering with some other police force that might be a little more cost-effective? I don't know, just anything that we can think of there because I think we're going to have to, it's just not fair to everyone else to be tightening the budget and these kinds of things still be in double digits, and I know it is the way it is, but, and we will be negotiating that contract within a year.
We've had some conversations and discussions on opportunities, and that conversation is understood by the sheriff's department.
Okay, great. And I think it's, I definitely highlighted the focus on review of retirement program benefits offered to new hires. In your spare time, it'd be really great to see what kind of a plan you can come up with. I'd like to see that brought forward to council so we can discuss it. I think there's just no doubt that that's the elephant in the room, you know, really going forward for a lot of these things. I am not in support of revenue neutral for our water rates and our sewer rates. To me, this is the one benefit that we can give every single citizen in Yountville. We were doing this when we didn't have any money. Now that we have money, and to say that, you know, they're not going to get this benefit, I'm just, I'm just not in support of that. I think that there's a lot of things we do for town, but our citizens, some use the community center, some use the pool, some use all sorts of things, but this is one thing that I feel we can give every citizen, so I want to continue this and show something much more dramatic than even this negative economic time. Also, the projections for the COP grants and the local government property tax, again, I'd be as conservative as you could on that. I know what they say, but I also know there's a $20 billion projection coming from the state, and even though they supposedly can't do something by law, they can if they declare a state of physical emergency, and it is not that far-fetched, they might have to do something like that, so I'd be as conservative as you could on that as well. In terms of the CIP programs, I generally agree with what you have kind of above the line and below the line here. I would like to see, you know, if we can continue to do the tree management, I know we asked when that came up that we'd like to see the cost on that, so based on the costs, I think that we'll have more detailed discussions about what we can do. You know, in tough times, I feel that trees are going to be standing there a little bit longer than some other things, so I can maybe move that below the line, at least parts of that, depending on what the costs come out to be. And also the modification of the old library space for the town use, I'd like to see what costs are there as well to really see what we can keep above the line versus below the And I know you have the methane recapture unit not even on the list, and it was going to go below the line, but, and again, I'd like to see what the cost of that would be. So there might be some AB32 funds out there for something like that. I think of all the things that we can probably do, if we have to really do anything in terms of AB32, there is so much more. of AB-32, there is so much more bang for your buck decreasing methane versus CO2 for lots of reasons I won't go into, that I think we should just see what the costs are for that. Also, for other budget reductions, one thing I see, again, is, and what Steve mentioned too, there's like six properties that might get built out, so impact fees, you know, really don't make any sense, but, you know, in that whole discussion, we're spending, my calculation, like last year, $416,000 for planning and building, but yet we say almost every meeting, we're almost built out. So if we are gonna see, if there's any place that I see to start making some reductions, especially in that area, if we're really built out, it's hard to really justify $416,000 a year in expenses there. And I'm almost done. So my only sacred cow is water and sewer, and I think it's a very, very nice report, and very thorough, and thanks a lot.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Chilton?
Let me ask a question or two to start. Kathleen, on the state cops grant?
Yes.
I had that noted as well. We didn't include that last year, and we ended up getting it, which was quite the surprise.
That's true.
This year, I, when I was reading the staff report, there seemed to be some belief that there's a new structure that's been put in place, or at least proposed. I'm not sure if that was put in place, or was simply in the proposal stage, that makes that, in your belief, a little bit more of a strong funding source?
Yes, current information, last year, we didn't include it. We, it was, at that time, funded by State General Fund, which was totally at risk. Then the state set aside a special VLF tax just to fund cops, but there was a lag in them collecting it. So we didn't know if we were gonna get it, then we didn't know if we'd get the full amount, so there was that. Everything I'm, we're reading right now, we are staying current, because we know it can change, we know the state can take it away as fast as they give it, and sometimes faster. So, but everything we're reading right now is that VLF is secure through the end of fiscal year 2011, and we will get our $100,000. The larger agencies that are eligible for over $100,000, they're getting cut back, probably to 100. But right now, it sounds like everybody's gonna get their 100.
Okay. This was also brought up about our friends at Napa County Sheriff. Is the contract end, do we have one more full fiscal year to go on that?
Correct. This fiscal year is identified with a 12%.
Right, and I-
We have a, we will begin negotiations on a new contract.
I think that one thing that does bear mention, because no doubt, if you look across the state, public safety costs have been increasing at a great rate, is this contract was backloaded. The first year was treated as a freebie year, and then the escalating costs were backloaded. So I, I remember even back then, when we did this, we said, you know what, this looks better than it really is right now, and it's gonna look worse than it is down the road. So, you know, we're kind of paying the price for those decisions, whether it was the right one or not, down the road. I think those are my only real questions right now. Well, I got one more. I think it's GAZB 45, the OPEB reserve.
Yes.
When do we have to do another actuarial study?
We need to do it for this year's reporting, 2009, 10.
Okay.
So we'll have to budget for it in 2010, 11.
So that will be reported?
And get it done in July.
Okay. By the end of this fiscal, the current fiscal year?
Well, for, yes, for our current fiscal year reporting, at the end of this fiscal year, it will include the results of an updated actuarial study.
Will that come at CAFR time, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so my first comment was, is I, I think that overall, staff, particularly Kathleen and Steve, have presented what I consider to be a very responsible budget. I think there are reasons, and Councilmember Dutton touched on that a little bit, I think there are reasons to be optimistic that some of these projections could be low. At the same time, I think there are plenty of reasons to question whether they may not be met. So I think that, on the, on the side of where are you budgeting, you should always budget on the low end. You never assume you're gonna get your bonus at the end of the year, and spend that money ahead of time. You budget what you think is the lowest. And I, I think in general, the state cops grant, that seems to be the one item that we're the most exposed to, the state shenanigans, is the question. So overall, TOT, I completely agree. Sales tax, I think that's the right thing to do, and there's some reasons to believe that hopefully that will be higher. Property tax, we know that's gonna go down. Everything else. I, I generally agree with the idea of the no new services initiatives or programs introduced unless accompanied with an identified funding source, and I think it's worth pointing out that an identified funding source can be cutting something else. It can be cutting an existing service that is not quite as important. We had this past, when were the kids here? Friday?
Right.
This last Friday, we had kids from the second and third grade class from the elementary school came over and did, meet the government kind of a day, and the Councilwoman Mueller and Mayor Zosman and myself were here. And what was most interesting was, we did a mock council session, and the idea, the question to the kids, these are second and third graders, are, do you want to spend $50,000 on a new playground, and here's what you're gonna get? Do you want to spend $30,000? Or there's always option, see, as Steve always points out, although he gave kids three options, which maybe is not a great idea, is to do nothing, not get a new playground. And the mock council member who was sitting in this seat, ironically enough, he said-
Coincidence.
It was. Although his name was Luis, so I thought that was also. He said, "I don't think we should spend anything." He's like, "Because people are losing their jobs, and our school might close, and I think we could do without a playground." And I thought from a third grader, that was a really remarkable thing to say, and he actually stuck with that vote. But in the end, all the kids decided to spend $30,000, not 50, because they wanted to be able to save something in case they needed it. That, that won events, and, you know, I thought it was interesting that kids said that, but it did make me go back and say, I think it's worthwhile to look at different things that I have generally held to be the most important, and reassess them. And I think that's been the benefit of the recession for most people. Most of us have gone out and said, you know what, let's go back and look, and see what's really important, and if we've got a cut, we've got a cut. And I, I look at some of the concepts of revenue recovery, or cost recovery, I think is the right word, not revenue, cost recovery, when it comes to the after-school program, or some of our, the pool, for example, some of the big things that don't recover as much. And I think that those things do bear looking at, and I think that in context of what is really important in this town, what do we provide, what do we have to provide? We have to provide public safety, we have to, you know, provide the basic infrastructure, water, safe water, et cetera. I look at the fact that we've got a, one of the most important assets in our community, which is the school next door, and that, that school is in danger. And I think that we have to ask ourselves, looking at a, I backtracked into a $5.7 million budget, do we need to support that in some ways? Or do we need to redirect money that we currently use to support that school, and support to make sure that's here for a long time? So I, I think that it does merit looking at some of the existing services, saying, hey, are those really important to us? If they are, at what cost? I looked at CIP, the streetlight replacement expansion phase one. We all know, I think, that the streetlights are hideous, but it doesn't feel that important to me right now. It doesn't feel important if somebody knocks one over, to not spend money replacing with an ugly one. But, you know, I, I'm kind of looking at the budget in those lenses. I also feel obligated to point out on the OPEB, the actuarial study, which this council did make a major, I'll call it down payment, in the past year against that, said that we should be reserving 15%, and should we just start at a 7.5%, and we'll get to 6% this year. I'm sure most jurisdictions are doing zero in the current economic environment, so at least we're somewhere. But it's, it's kind of like that on the water and sewer rates. I think we're kind of living off tomorrow a little bit, where we're gonna say that's important, but what happens when we don't have that money in the future? And, you know, 20 years down the road, those folks are gonna pay a whole lot more because we didn't. So I, I, again, overall, I think that I like the spirit of the budget, and I think we should really sit back and say, what's most important? And go from there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I agree with Councilmember Chilton's take on, on the perspective that staff has taken on this budget. I think it's appropriate to be conservative. It's certainly always gonna be better to figure out what to do with additional revenue in the middle of a cycle, rather than run out. That's pretty basic. I, I do support, just, and I'm not gonna repeat, many of the items that have been mentioned, I agree with, but the rainy, I'll call it a rainy day fund, the, whatever that number, $100,000 or some other figure, I think it's very important. I think that's one of the examples of things that we have been calling for Sacramento to do. And there are several things here that we have been calling for Sacramento to do. Don't spend beyond your means. If you have new projects, identify funding sources. I mean, these, these are absolutely appropriate for us to do, and hopefully, they will be more broadly utilized. I do support trying to smooth out those likely spikes in PERS costs, so I like the idea of focusing on that. And, you know, this council and previous councils have been struggling with the idea of cost recovery on our water and sewer rates. It's really challenging, because I think it would be easy to say, we don't want to raise anybody's rates, especially in this tough economic time, but at the same time, it has been a council priority to try to reduce those subsidies. So that, I think that's gonna be an important discussion that we have. And I think it may go to what Councilmember Chilton was just saying, is basically, nothing is off the table for discussion. Just because we have been doing something, doesn't mean that it won't be reviewed and analyzed to make sure that it's still viable. You know, I think public safety, it is an expensive service. I think we get a wonderful service for the cost. Of course, we'd like it to be a smaller increase. A lot of it is out of our control, but I know staff is working with, with Sheriff's Department officials and Cal Fire officials to do what we can. We certainly don't want to minimize the level of service that we're getting. I think that would be a terrible mistake. And I think staff is, is right on about trying to prepare for the worst and hope for the best with the state. And it may come down to something like the Yountville Trolley is put on hiatus if we lose the, or if the NCTPA loses the funding source for that service. That would be one of those items that we would have to decide, is it more important than something else? And we may decide that it is, but then we have to identify the funding source. So I think this is a great structure to get us started when we have our, our really detailed budget discussions. And some, some priorities have been mentioned with the CIP. I think they're, I think they're all in play, frankly. Undergrounding utilities, we try to time that with private development, that makes sense. It's, it's a good cost climate right now, that also makes sense, but that might be something that needs to be deferred. Or, as was mentioned, maybe the tree management program, or the streetlights. So we'll be looking at all of these things to try to prioritize, and just be, be smart about what we're gonna spend our money on. But I think this is a nice foundation to work from.
Good. Thank you for your comments. I generally agree with all the comments made from council members this evening. The one thing I did make a note to myself, I believe our enterprise fund should be self-sufficient, and if that means taking a closer look at those subsidies, it's something we're gonna have to do. Like Councilmember Chilton said, we may be paying the price, not, or enjoying the benefits now, but future councils and citizens of Yountville will be paying the price in the future, so that's definitely something we have to talk about. I appreciate staff's approach to this, everything conservatively thought through. And my, and my feeling is, you know, we'll, we'll take each of these elements, one at a time, as we approach the budget discussions, and address them. Safety issues are a primary concern of mine as well. If, if streetlight replacement is an issue that has to do with safety, there are certain areas that we really do need to address, as, as it's been brought up in the past. They're just simply unsafe, so we need to get lighting in place. Everything else, good assessment, good analysis, looking forward to starting the budget discussions and addressing a number of these issues.
I have one small additional comment I'd like to make. It's also my understanding that the GAN limit's gonna be expiring during our upcoming budget, and if that does not pass, that's gonna have very serious consequences that we need to factor in at a risk management level, too.
That's true. Is there anyone from the public wanting to comment on any of this this evening? Okay. Any more comments? Councilmember Chilton?
If I could just follow up, I made a comment to Councilwoman Mueller. The, the, the annual budget contingency, this $100,000, I don't know, that, I have to agree that, I think that struck me a little bit wrong. I think we've, we've always had a little bit of flex. I think this year, we had $30,000, or, I thought we had something. It was something, always in that very small range. Steve's saying zero, but I don't believe him.
If you can find a contingency in this year's budget, I'll buy dinner.
Okay. And, and I don't know if it was called, but, wow, really?
But you're correct that there were contingencies, and if $100,000, you know-
Oh, no, so my only-
Those are all, you know, that may not be the right number when we're finalizing.
So my only comment is, I do agree that, you know, if you look at a $5.7 million revenue budget, and again, I backed into that using your 85% number earlier, so if that's wrong, you can correct me. But around $5.7 million, that's a, that's a really, $100,000 is a really small percentage. However, that is why we have a $1.025 million reserve. So we are talking about that the state should have what we do have today. It's not that we don't have that. That money is there, and the council could choose to use it if we did or not, but that's a choice. So that money is not necessarily untouchable, although it probably should be.
Well, you see, that's the contradiction at times that the council has, and what we're really looking at is a small project, if you think about your annual budget as a project and having a small contingency. That's what I'm suggesting we do, because if the council's general guidance to me is put a budget together, stay within all these, and don't use the general fund reserve, that's hard for me to do without giving you guys a little bit of room, or, you know, if something comes in slightly. And I think in, in review, the council has had prior years with 35, and I think I've seen, you know, 100, maybe a little higher than what we're in, some of them, but I, I think when you look at some of the things we're doing, and it also could be that we put a little bit of that using capital, our capital funds to cover, you know, it doesn't all have to be 100,000 general fund contingency, because a number of our projects are identified differently. So just some things for us to put back to help achieve the things that you want, and I'm, you know, for us, I think what we all are gonna have to do is a little prioritization. You know, we're gonna have to accept that, you know, we may have to do without a few things, or something that normally would have been replaced this year, we live with, and, or else, you know, our, our plant material budget may be a bit less than what it was last year. Doesn't mean we're not gonna replace and update, but, you know, we might not have the same dollar amount. And, you know, we have some activities. We've gotta have an election this year, so there's costs that, you know, need to get factored into some of those things, and how we balance those.
Good. Okay.
We appreciate your feedback. This is helpful to staff, and I think it will provide a good framework as we move forward with our internal budget development and review, and get ready for those budget work- those budget workshops.
Can I?
Councilmember Chilton?
Yeah, thank you. One last question, and Kathleen, if you don't know the answer to this yet, you can say you don't know it, but do you have a feeling for where the overall budget will go in terms of money that would go from the general fund into the special, I don't know if we call it the special projects fund anymore, the capital-
Capital projects fund?
Capital projects, 'cause last year we had such a dramatic decrease in our funding for that versus the previous year. That was almost the flex item.
Right. I, I don't know yet. It's too soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep you posted.
Well, I do think, actually, uh, Councilmember Chilton, that brings up a really good point. Historically, you funded your, um, capital projects fund by excess revenues from your, so my gut feeling is, you know, if we're bringing a revenue-neutral budget to you, you're not gonna have, you're, you're not necessarily going to be having continued large increases put in, and in fact, you'll start drawing down from your capital, uh, projects budget. If I'm just having to give you a Reader's Digest snapshot, I mean, you're, you're probably looking at, uh, a small amount going in and drawing down more. But that just, you know, I, I think if things balance and we're able to maintain our revenues and expenditures, well, excuse me, if we're able to maintain our expenditures within the revenue, then that will turn around when the economy bounces back up a bit.
Right. I, I, my concern is, is that we have no other source of, no other substantial source of funding for capital projects, the basics.
Yes, you will continue to see me, that's why I will keep putting this kind of information in front of you.
That's our only revenue source, right?
Mm-hmm. Correct. I mean, our, that is what we've historically been, I mean, caution, you have a small amount of capital impact fees, but again, as I indicated to you, impact fees are a declining revenue source. We still have a little bit of a balance coming in, and we have a handful of projects, but, you know, those are your, that and your general fund excess are principally what's funded your capital projects budget.
I would just add that we do have approximately a two-million-dollar unallocated reserve in our capital projects fund that could be allocated for projects.
And also, I would add that we have grant funding, and then the, we collect the water sewer fees, so we may, we have some enterprise funds, so it's not all general fund going into the capital projects fund.
Any more discussion on this item? Budget workshops scheduled for May?
We have, uh, May fourth and eighteen?
Fourth and eighteen.
In the afternoon. Yeah, roughly one to five. Agenda to follow.
And I may use council meetings to give you a little update on some things, if there's changes or trends that we become aware of that we think are important, that we might want your feedback before we get to those workshops.
Okay. Item twelve, town, town manager employment agreement. Councilmember Dutton?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, on behalf of the report, I think we have finalized discussions with the town manager, the council, and coming, I wanna present this to you today. As you know, Steve started this in October, and his first review is October of oh-eight. Should've been October of oh-nine, things got dragged out, and we finally got it done in March, so, and as you'll see later on, we'll change that in the future. Uh, this was, it, it took some time, and we started with an evaluation process, and I think that everybody, uh, is in notes here in the write-up, uh, or in staff report here, said that, um, I, you know, Steve's performance was extremely positive. I think we all agreed on that. I did, I know when we did our ranking system, it was amazingly how close everything was, and it was, uh, extremely, uh, well-received, I think, by everyone. Just a few of the things that went over after we, I talked to, to Steve, I came back to the council a couple of times in closed session, and I was able to talk with everybody on an individual basis, and that way, uh, we just sort of got an input on how each one felt, and came back at the last closed session and agreed upon what you can hear. Now, uh, some of the little, the items here, auto allowance, uh, it's going to five-hundred-and-forty dollars, effective in January, it was four-hundred. Uh, the jump of that, quite honestly, is prior, uh, to this, that it was not treated as a taxable item. And Steve, uh, was informed that now that four-hundred dollars was gonna have to be as a taxable thing. And obviously, that'd be as, a pay cut in a sense, so we elected to, uh, basically gross it up to a point where it still gave him the same five-forty, and that would be effective on January first. Uh, telephone allowance, prior to this, again, it was a, it was a town telephone, and without going into a lot of things, there are certain restrictions, and sometimes you cannot use a town phone while you're doing outside political business and this type of thing, so it was Phil Best, that he just had a phone on his own, and therefore, he could use it whatever purpose he wants. Uh, severance, uh, this was just a minor one. It always, it had been two months prior until three months after the election. It's fairly standard in most employment contracts for town managers. Steve requested we go to three and three, and nobody really had a problem with that. And effective, um, March first of next year, uh, he will go to five weeks annual vacation, which for his time on the job, overall, and is, but fairly well in line with all the other jurisdictions and the people in that particular position. Which came down to the salary, and I, first of all, I wanna go back a little bit. When I say the performance evaluation, we talked about a lot of things, and I think, when you look at what Steve's brought to the town, um, in the two-and-a-half years he's been here, uh, first off, he actually moved to the town, uh, which was the first, um, I believe, the first town manager, uh, that we ever had that actually lived in the town, and he did that. As all of you know, he's become very active in the community. I think his, uh, he's shown a very positive interaction with not only the, uh, with the community, the residents, but also the businesses. And, uh, a lot of people would consider that quite a change. I think he's been very well-respected from within the county, uh, that he deals with a lot of the other jurisdictions and those type of things. And also established a very good working relationship with the various, um, contract services that we use. We mentioned earlier, the fire department, uh, the, um, police department. I don't know, that could change after the next negotiations, but we'll wait and see. And also, uh, with the veterans home, which is an integral part. What, what the object in when I tell you what we did on the, the salary here was sort of in a way to try to tell Stephen a sense how much we appreciate what he's done and brought to the town, and also that we sort of like him to stay around a while. And, uh, so consequently, we came up with a three-year salary program, and if I read through it, and I will tell you this, that, uh, it's nothing, it's not a guaranteed or mandatory, it's just sort of the guidelines we came up with. And the, first of all, effective, uh, on March first of this year, Steve will get a three percent raise from his current salary. Okay? Now, note that it had been in December before. We're moving it to March for a number of reasons, uh, primarily of, which would give us a bit, a little better idea of when we go into budgets. Secondly, it doesn't fall right in the mixture, mix every, when we have elections every other year. Right in the middle of that, you're gonna be doing negotiations with the town managers, so we felt it'd be better to move that to March, uh, to March first. On March first of two-eleven, again, provided he receives a favorable performance valuation, his, uh, salary would be adjusted anywhere between three and five percent. And the same would go for March of, uh, twenty-twelve, again, if he receives, again, a, um, very, uh, favorable performance, it would be between four and six percent. And I want to emphasize that these are not guaranteed, they're not mandatory, they're simply just benchmarks that we would go by, given that if it was a, uh, positive performance for the previous year that we're evaluating, and, um, hopefully, that'll be the case, and I know see, I don't see any reason it won't be. So, um, I wanna thank everybody, Steve, the other council members, everything, for their input and patience, and I think, uh, we've been able to offer Steve a nice, uh, a package here that, uh, something that he deserves for what he's brought to the town of Yountville.
Thank you for that report. Does council have any questions or comments at this time? Councilmember Chilton?
I, I wanna make just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I wanna thank Councilmember Dutton for spending quite a bit of time and effort, uh, on this process, along with Steve. I've already asked him if he'll be a freelance labor negotiator next year. Uh, I think he said no, so, um, but, but Bill, thank you very much. Um, I, I just wanna say that, um, this, this, uh, you know, this agreement to me does represent, um, I think, you know, one way that we can acknowledge, um, Steve's great performance since he's been hired. I've said on multiple occasions and multiple people that on the three-plus years now I've been on the council, that probably the thing I would like to take the most credit for that I can is for hiring Steve, 'cause I think that probably, uh, um, has had the greatest impact on this town over the last couple of years. I really can't take too much credit, because if, uh, if it hadn't worked out, I wouldn't wanna be held accountable for that either, so. Um, so thank you, Steve, and I, and everything that Steve does and has made happen is because, in general, we have, um, a great town staff, um, a vast majority of which, in my opinion, really do overperform. Um, when I hear about stuff about government workers and bureaucrats and blah, 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 um, that really doesn't apply here, thank goodness. Um, you know, if we worked for the state, I think it would. Um, but, uh, you know, we've got a bunch of good people who have the best intentions at heart, do work hard, and, um, do well for this town. Um, Steve, you know, gets a lot of the credit for that, but thanks to everybody else, and, and he's the leader, so not everybody's perfect. No, nobody's perfect, but, uh, but, uh, we'll, we'll take what we've got, so thank you, Steve, and we'll just keep going forward.
Councilmember Mueller?
Uh, I'd also like to, uh, thank Counselor Dutton for taking this role on and being our negotiator. I thought, uh, it went very smoothly, and, uh, really appreciate him doing that. Uh, I'd just like to say, you know, thanks to Steve. I think that, um, there's a lot of things that the people in town don't really see that he does, but I think there's a lot that they do see. They do see that we've had a very, very significant change in how the town operates, and it's, um, uh, just how, how it functions. You can just, you know, the little things, the, the flowers in the park, the overall just response that you now, um, get when you ask them, you know, what, you know, could be considered mundane questions, Steve is there to address those. And I, I think, you know, overall, the, the direction that he gives the staff, I think, um, uh, the staff is performing very, very well. I do believe they also like working for Steve. No one's, I don't see anybody crying in the bushes or anything, so, uh, I think that everyone's pretty happy about that. So, you know, these things, uh, there's, it's, it's hard to do, and, uh, Steve just really steps up to the plate and gets a lot done, and there's a lot of things that, unless people are paying attention to these council meetings, I'm sure there's some that are, but, you know, he, he's really brought in a significant amount of money for this town that could've just been, uh, you know, left on the turf out there, we wouldn't really have known about, including, um, the sale of the water and, and numerous other things, so, um, I'll kinda cut it short, but thank you, Steve. I think that we really, I and a lot of other people really appreciate it. Uh, I just, I, and I do support the, um, the package that we've given him. Uh, the only exception I have, I just have a fundamental, um, problem with things wording that may and could and benchmarks. Uh, I just, uh, think that we should, uh, I'm absolutely fine with all the, the concrete items in this terms, but, uh, I really don't support putting in future words that don't really mean anything. Other than that, thanks again, Steve.
Vice Mayor?
Thanks. I, I will also start out by, um, commending Councilmember Dutton's work on this. It made, um, it made the process go much, uh, more smoothly than I remember in years past, and, and not because of the, uh, the issues, but because you had a real strong knowledge of the council's position, and you were, you were a great communicator, I think, with, with Steve and, and with us on an individual and a collective basis throughout the process. So it, it really allowed us to analyze the, the, uh, kind of the key elements really well, so I thank you, um, for doing that. Uh, I'll just speak to a couple of the items, uh, that have been brought up. Um, you know, I think it'd be hard-pressed to find anybody that's not satisfied or more than satisfied with your performance, uh, Steve, and, um, it's been brought up, it's been on a personal level, the, your community involvement. I've been extremely impressed on a professional level, at the county level, at the state level, not only the people that you know, but the, uh, kind of the, the depth and breadth of your knowledge of, of issues. And I think that's been, uh, really critical for us in these last couple of years. You've, you've been, uh, you know, you, three of the four department heads we have here are, are new since you came here, and I think you've, you've hit home runs both on the permanent hires and the inter, well, he's not here anymore, so not to talk about the interim hire. He's not so much, but, uh, it's been, it's, I think it's been a very, um, it's kind of a easily overlooked, um, success that you've had with bringing in people. As Councilmember Chilton mentioned, we've got a great team here, but it's, it's not always easy to bring in new people that, that gel immediately, and I think that has happened, and, and that's, uh, in no small part to your leadership. Um, in terms of the term of, of the contract, I did feel like it was important, um, and we all understand these economic times, it's very difficult to say, uh, you know, we went around and around about, um, how to properly, uh, compensate you for the service you have given us, and I think one of the things that we wanted to do is, um, share the commitment that you've made to the town by committing to you that we, we are projecting or anticipating this level of growth in your contract based on your continued growth and the quality of your service. So, uh, I think it was important. Uh, it's also, I think, uh, smart business, if we did not build in language that said, you have these incentives in the second and third year of your contract, then we would be obligated, in my opinion, to put together more upfront money, frankly, uh, to front-load rather than, uh, stretch this out over a period of years. So I think it was, uh, mutually beneficial that we added that element to the contract. Um, it allows us a little more budget certainty, and, uh, and that's something that's important, not only because of the election cycle and not having you become a political football every couple of years, but also just so we know, um, how we can anticipate our costs as it goes toward, uh, your services, it gives us a little additional stability. So, um, I'd say, you know, from the leadership you've shown, right down to your play on the bocce courts, and your willingness to wear the crab hat, uh, at the crab feeds, you know, I think you've just been a great addition to the, uh, like you said, to the team here, uh, at, uh, Town Hall, and also to the community, so thank you, and, um, we'll continue to monitor your performance, but we anticipate great things.
Thank you for your comments.
Vice Mayor, you left out the Gumby.
The Gumby suit?
I remember the Gumby suit.
Good point.
Well, I can, I can echo, uh, much of the sentiment that's been expressed here this evening. Thanks, Bill, for doing a great job, and you made our job a lot easier. Um, and Steve, you make our job a lot easier. Based on experience, um, it hasn't been any easier than it is, has been, since we hired you, and, and you've really helped define the issues for us and help us to, uh, to do our job. So that's really important to me as a council member, and, uh, your skills and your talent are very much appreciated. Did you wanna make any more comments, Bill?
Well, I already, no, I just wonder, I did remind Steve about traffic control on Saturday.
That's right. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this matter this evening? Okay. Very good. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to introduce Resolution Number two-eight-six-nine-dash-one-oh, approving the Second Amendment to employment agreement with town manager, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the town of Yountville.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None that motion carries? Thank you.
If I could, just a moment, I'd like to express, uh, one, my appreciation to the council for your, your very kind comments, but also the support that you're given to this position, and also, and I do wanna echo a few comments that the council made, is that we have a good team here. Um, that team is comprised of a lot of our employees, um, and every once in a while, they're, they're being pushed, um, every once in a while, they- Every once in a while, they have to remind me there's a balancing act. But what we have here is a good team that really is dedicated to doing the right things day in and day out for the community. They're responsive, they're willing to look at some of the change and some of the ideas, and they're also willing to be pretty candid with me when they think some of the things aren't so smart. But I also want to thank the council. A council provides a sense of direction and support for the organization. And I think you're a very solid council in the sense that you help us to frame the discussions and therefore, even though you don't always agree, I think it's important that the framework so that staff can go do the things that you want us to do. Because when there's a lot of discombobulation and a lot of, you know, concern, that translates down to the organization and it makes for a less positive working environment. And I think to that, to that point, we're able to focus and, you know, focus on doing the service delivery, looking at how to improve that. And I think for the most part, we have a good quality of work life here and our employees generally enjoy being here. And that's a testament to our community. And, you know, it's often said, but Yountville really is a very unique place and I feel, you know, one very honored to be able to serve in this community and this position and also to call it home.
Thank you. Any more comments? Okay. No staff informational reports, nothing off the cuff, council reports? I did not attend flood control, nor did Vice Mayor Dunbar this afternoon, but their agenda looked pretty light. It was basically just updates. So nothing to report there. NCTPA is tomorrow, actually. And other reports and comments?
I'll make a, oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Dutton?
No, you can go back Saturday, I'm sure.
Yeah, but I'm not going to remind Steve of his traffic.
No, I already did.
Yeah, I'll mention Saturday, probably. Councilmember Chilton?
I, one item that occurred recently, I haven't seen a lot of places, there was an election up at the Veterans Home for the chairman and the vice chairman of the Allied Council. I just want to congratulate Ed Olson, who was previously the vice chair, and the new vice chair is Don Deledum. So I think from my perspective, it looks like they've got some really good people up there and they're going to have a nice productive board and continue what's been going on. The former chair, Montague, really did, Tom did a great job. And I think he's going to be missed, not only for his leadership, but his good humor as well. So hopefully we'll see him around town still quite a bit. So congratulations to those two.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all the members in our town who put on the red and white affair at the Silverado Country Club Winery this weekend. It was really great. There was a lot of turnout, it was a lot of fun, really super food and wine. And I hope they raised a lot of money for, yes, I don't know if anybody's seen a total yet, but that was very nice. And as councillor Lewis talked, Chilton talked about earlier, the second and third grade was here for a mock council meeting. And I thought, well, what are these kids really going to get out of this? But boy, was I surprised. First of all, they were just so darn cute. That was really fun. And I was really amazed just how they, they really, you know, took to heart, you know, their little project we gave them to sit up here on the council and to run through an item and very impressed with their physical conservancy about the playground equipment. And I think it was another great thing that, you know, Steve and a lot of the staff put some time into, and I think it was very valuable for the kids and I certainly found it very valuable. So it would be great if we could do that every year. I think I certainly had a good time too. So, thanks.
Mayor, I guess I would say one thing, and I only, because I want to point it out, I'm sure people are very aware of it, but I believe this Thursday night, here is the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting.
Very robust agenda.
And obviously, the dog park discussion is going to be on it. So I know I've been getting numerous calls and emails from people in regards to this subject. So hopefully, those of you concerned on either side of the issue will show up, because I think it's going to be very important. So I believe it starts at 6 o'clock.
Okay. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Yes, I just wanted to make one comment since councillor Mueller already addressed the red and white dinner, which was, it was very successful. I would just warn everybody that if they see that one family, I don't know the name of the auctioneers, do you know the family? They're incredibly effective. And so if you're in a room with those two gentlemen, keep your hands down. But just for a good cause, just for a good cause. Don't wave hello to anybody across the room. But you'll mention the Taste of Yountville, I think, Mayor, for this weekend. The only other thing I wanted to mention is to give folks a little bit of an update on what's happening with the Pathway Home program up at the Veterans Home. Some people are very aware and some may not be that it even exists, but it's been serving our young Iraq and Afghan, Afghanistan veterans for the last couple of years. And I've been a member of a kind of a volunteer committee. Sam Frommowitz here in town has been instrumental, as have been members from the Napa Rotary to supporting the program for these couple of years. And they're really reaching out to the public right now to get additional funding, because they are not part of the Veterans Affairs, they are not funded by the state, they're a private nonprofit. And so funding, they were able to exist these first couple of years on a very generous private donation, and that revenue is running out by this summer. We've been successful in reaching out to Congressman Thompson's office, who is evaluating and considering appropriations requests at the federal level. We've received numerous letters of support from other city councils, as well as our supervisor, Mark Luce, and potentially the Board of Supervisors as a whole. So it's been very impressive, the kind of community outreach and community support that the program's been receiving. They have three events coming up. The first one, many people may be aware of, it's the Cycle for Sight. It's on April 17th. And that's a, it's kind of a shared benefits ride. And you'll probably see it, hopefully, an ad in the Yountville Sun, if not listed in the NAPA Register and elsewhere. But that's coming up, I said, on the 17th. It's a ride of, I think, three different lengths for people to participate and that'd be a way to also support the program. There is a golf tournament, date still to be determined in June, at Silverado Country Club. It's, they're putting together, bringing in some various celebrities to help support the program that way. And the third item is on June 20th, over in Santa Rosa, the Wounded Warriors Group. And they've been putting out some material through the mail and just around town. They're doing a polo match, and it has been sanctioned apparently by the, you know, US Polo Association. They have, it's going to be a whole day of activities as well as polo match, polo matches. So that's another opportunity for folks to potentially support our pathway program here. And just a thank you to Fred Guzman and his staff for what they're doing for the young warriors up there. They're about 35 currently in the program. It's about a four-month program, give or take a few weeks, depending on the kind of levels of service they need for mostly post-traumatic stress and mental health issues. But it's a great program that's, you know, it's a little bit understated in its public awareness, but we're trying to do things to change that. So if anybody has any questions, I'd always be happy to educate. And if you're able to participate in any of those events, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Chilton, you had another comment?
Just one quick follow-up on the red and white. I have heard tentative numbers, which are good, but I haven't heard a final number. So I was pleased, because everybody was a little nervous with the economic situation. You know, one thing I was thinking about the other night, because we talk about Yountville School as sort of our school, is with the red and white itself, the people who attended, it's remarkable how many people spent just tireless hours working on that event, people who spent literally thousands of dollars, and they do not live within the town limits of this town. And I, it's another, to me, another example of one of the things that we have to remember that, yeah, we've got our town, we've got our 3,200 residents, but there's a lot of people who contribute greatly, whether employees or certainly the people who go to the school or contribute to, you know, some of the nonprofit organizations, that, you know, our friends in Napa and the unincorporated county really do contribute a lot to this town. And I think we should always keep that in mind when we talk about resident, non-resident. You know, I think they should all be honorary Yountville citizens probably when it's all said and done, because I want to thank them specifically for their contributions.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. And Vice Mayor, I've been working with the, this program, the Pathway Home program for this polo tournament to get representation from both the town of Yountville and the Chamber of Commerce, and we are working closely with them. And it's going to be an awesome, awesome polo match. So hopefully you'll be able to attend, if nothing else, and just check it out. It's really going to be exciting. We have an exciting event coming up this weekend. It's Saturday, the 20th. It's the Taste of Yountville, which is part of the Mustard Festival. It is from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. We have, right now I have about 70 vendors participating, a lot of wineries, Yountville Appalachian Wineries, all of our restaurants and other food purveyors, mustards, olive oils, vinegars, confectioners, all kinds of things. So it's really going to be fun. It's a street fair, street festival-type event, very casual atmosphere. There'll be, there'll be live entertainment that's free, of course, live entertainment. There'll be entertainment and children's activities at the new Community Center Plaza and along Washington Street. We will close Washington Street at Yount at 8:00 a.m. Saturday morning, and it will remain closed until we get the whole thing broke down and cleaned up and probably until about 7:00 p.m. It closes at Yount Street, and we are extending the closure up to Humboldt. There will be arts and crafts in Vandeler Park, as well as food and wine vendors and entertainment. There will be French Laundry garden tours, starting at noon on the hour, conducted by their master gardener, Tucker Taylor. And those have been really popular in years past. He's going to take as many as 30 people at a time on a tour, and those tours can last anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour. So get yourself signed up for one of those tours if you're interested in seeing what's in that hoop house. And then it extends all the way up to Washington Square, where there'll be entertainment there as well. Live jazz band will be performing up there. The Cal Fire will be barbecuing up there, and we'll have some wineries and microbrews. So it's a fun time for everyone. There'll be plenty of parking, good signage, good directions. I hope everybody has an opportunity to come out and join us and really enjoy this event. It is a fundraiser. It raises, the revenues generated from this or proceeds, we cover our costs first, and if there's anything left over, of course, those go to the programs at the Chamber sponsors. And so we hope that we'll do well. We're anticipating some perfect weather, and we're really looking forward to it. And like Bill said, we've got about 60 volunteers and they all have jobs and they all have places to be and things to do. So it should go off without a hitch, at least that's what I'm hoping for. Without the rain, it can't go wrong. So we're really looking forward to a fun day. So we hope you'll all join us. Any more council comments, remarks? Anything I didn't cover? Okay. Future agenda items, Fire and Sheriff Public Safety Quarterly Report, Climate Protection Campaign Update from Mr. Hurwitz from NCTPA. And we have no closed session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Deacon?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.